Now to our second panel, candidates for four seats on the Port Angeles City Council. The seven-member city council is elected at large to serve four-year terms. The city council elects a mayor and deputy mayor from the council to serve two-year terms. The council recruits and appoints the city manager. The council adopts local laws to secure the safety of and assist the well-being of city residents. The council sets fiscal policies, adopts the budget, approves spending, and sets salaries. Again, the candidates were asked to introduce themselves in two minutes or less, opening statements by covering the following points. What are your qualifications for this office? How do you intend to deal with the key issues confronting your area of responsibility? What is the primary goal you hope to accomplish during your first year in office? And again, in the order of filing and the order of the positions, we will start with position one. I'm Latricia Suggs. I hope I said that right. Please unmute. Patricia, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Latricia Suggs.
Suggs, okay. All right. You have two minutes.
Hello, welcome everybody and thank you for inviting me to this forum. My name is Latricia Suggs. I am a lifelong resident, enrolled a tribal member for Jamestown's Clallam Tribe, and the first Native American to sit on tribal council for the city of Port Angeles. I have worked in natural resources and environmental policy and planning for 20 years, working with both Lower Elway Clallam Tribe on the largest dam removal project within the United States. And also, I have worked with, I currently work with Jamestown's Clallam Tribe on restoration of the Lower Dungeoness River. Currently setting back a levee, which you can kind of see the photo behind me. I also sit on three committees for Jamestown's Clallam Tribe. I sit on the Economic Development Authority Board. I sit on the Health Committee, and I also sit on the Cannabis Board. Also, under the city, I sit on several committees for the city. I sit on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, the Williams Shore Memorial Pool Board. I have been active in just giving back to my community in any way that I can. I have been fortunate in my lifetime to be given opportunities to go after, to obtain college education. So I attended Western Washington University and obtained my bachelor's degree. You know, a lot of the key issues result for the city of Port Angeles revolve around our code updates, housing, homelessness is also an issue, but childcare is a critical issue within the city of Port Angeles. And I hope to work with council to obtain our goals.
At position number one also, Adam Garcia, please unmute. You have two minutes.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Adam Garcia. I grew up here in Port Angeles, graduated from the school district through high school. I served in the Army after that for 15 years. Was medically separated due to some ankle injuries and surgery. That was pretty unfortunate. I then attained a bachelor's degree in business. Currently considering going for my MBA. Letting, see what life throws me before I fully decide on that. I currently work with the VA clinic in town, the Veterans Clinic. And I help approximately 500 vets throughout Puget Sound get primary care in their homes. I think our main issues here in Port Angeles are going to be, you know, housing homelessness, COVID, and our business environment. The, let's see, some of the highlights I can say is that my time in the military, I was an intelligence analyst for the whole time, really. And in doing my multiple jobs, I found that I had to collaborate with many different organizations, many different businesses, all that had different rules, policies, procedures, laws governing their activities. And I had to come together with all these people and work together to meet whatever goals were set ahead of time. So I am experienced in collaboration with a variety of people and businesses. I'm used to taking in large amounts of information, sitting and reading some very dry material, and coming to the table ready to speak. So I take very seriously the obligation of being a representative for our citizens. And thank you so much for this opportunity.
Now the candidates for position two, we'll start with Mike French. Please unmute. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Mike French. I've been on the city council for four years now. I was born and raised here in Port Angeles. And for the past 15 years or so, I've been the owner and operator of the First Street Haven Restaurant in downtown Port Angeles. My wife and I have two school-aged children, so I've been very engaged with the school district. And you know, my wife and I have always viewed community service as really an essential part of our lives. When we were younger, we both volunteered and performed with the Port Angeles Flight Opera Association and the Port Angeles Symphony Orchestra. And more recently, I'm on the Port Angeles School District's Capital Advisory Committee. I will be entering my sixth year as the Vice President of the Hamilton Elementary PTO. And I'm on the Board of Directors for the Olympic Peninsula Community Clinic, that's formerly BMO. This year, I'm the Board President. Being on the city council places me on a variety of boards and committees. I'm on the Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce, the Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission. I'm the Chair of the Port Angeles Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and I'm on the County's Homelessness Task Force. So you can see the committee assignments that I have kind of frame, I think, the issues that are concerning to us really well. You see a through line of, you know, small business support, tourism, you know, having that downtown focus, and then of course, the housing and homelessness angle, being involved with the homelessness task force. And all of these subject matter areas, you know, whether I'm on a board or a committee, or whether we're talking at the council level, I try to bring a pragmatic, moderate, small-business-centered voice for the discussions that we have. You know, I'll just say, thanks for having us here tonight. I look forward to the questions and answer, and thanks very much.
Candidate for position two, John Madden, please unmute. You have two minutes. Please unmute, John.
There, works, okay. Hear me?
Yep. Hi, Ken.
I am John Madden, working for position two on the city council. My background speaks directly to the challenges that we face here in Port Angeles. I've been on medical mission team trips to Haiti and Belize, assisting those medical teams since 2005. I worked in prison ministry for 18 years. And I was landlord for 10 years, serving the homeless people and those recently released from treatment. I worked with the HEN program and Section 8, providing shelter for dozens of people who just needed some help negotiating. I was their advocate when it came to dealing with their payment partners and their treatment advisors. And I helped them to get their appointments to finish their intensive outpatient treatments. I see my role in this current climate that we're in, with the challenges that we've had over the last year, to have a distinct focus on the health of the residents of the city. In terms of things environmental, we have a lot of homelessness that is impacting the community in very unhealthy ways. So that would be my focus, and I'll regard it the rest of my time of years.
Okay, now the third race for candidates for position three. And we will start with Lindsay Schreman-Warren. Please unmute Lindsay, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Schreman-Warren, and I'm running for reelection to my second term on the Port Angeles City Council. I was born and raised in Port Angeles. My dad paints houses, and my mom was a teacher at Dry Creek Elementary. I now work as a lawyer with my own law office. I choose to come back to Port Angeles after leaving for college and for law school, because I know that Port Angeles can have a great vision and not just a great view. We have what it takes to make Port Angeles a place where everyone is better off and no one is left behind. I was honored to be elected to city council in 2017. I have been serving with the goal of ensuring financial, social, and ecological sustainability for our community, in particular for working families, elders, and children. I strive to create a city that provides meaningful inclusion and decision-making that affects our lives. The last few years have been unprecedented in our lives. Even before COVID, our community faced the housing crisis and childcare crisis brought on by past governments' poor planning and policies that favored the elite few at the expense of the rest of us. Many working people could not afford to make ends meet. People who are fully employed shouldn't have trouble finding a place to live or daycare for their children. These problems didn't start overnight, and they are not easy to solve. But the city is now moving in the right direction, even as we face new challenges. I'm hesitant about taking credit for accomplishments, because city council members don't make decisions on our own. This is a democracy, not an autocracy. And I prefer to stand in the audience of the ribbon cuttings rather than on the stage. But I want to name some of the issues where I've helped to make Port Angeles a better place for working families and seniors. We've removed barriers to housing affordability and availability for homeowners and renters. We prevented increased homelessness during the pandemic and collaborated with community partners to create exits from homelessness for local residents. We supported proactive police and first responder programs. We restarted the city's code enforcement program. We've addressed the childcare shortage. We've decreased utility rates for the average customer. We supported downtown revitalization, small business, and new manufacturing industries. There's more work to do, which is why I'm running for reelection. Thank you.
Candidate for position three, Jenna Stamper. And Jenna, did I say your name correctly? No, okay.
That's okay. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for having me here today. My name is Gina Stamper. A Port Angeles native, a local business owner. I'm a property owner, both commercial and private landlord. And most importantly, I'm a mother. And so I believe I have a really well-rounded perspective of the city. I was drawn to the city council to really help make a positive change in our community. Our community faces some unique challenges and others that are not so unique to most West Coast cities. I really feel that public safety is a significant challenge that faces our small city. And as a parent, even frequenting one of our newest parks, we face concerns of even sending our children to the bathroom, especially by themselves. So I want to be a strong advocate of our code enforcement and police department to make sure they are funded to the fullest extent while still keeping our city within budget. I want to continue to make sure our new emergency operations center gets completed within a timely fashion to ensure that, to ensure the safety of our community. I believe a strong economic foundation is very important to our budget and to the overall health of our community. I would like to be part of lowering barriers for new businesses to thrive within our business sector. Our port has a large capacity to facilitate larger employers for our area. And I would really like to continue to develop high-performing relationships with these partners to ensure that our city is transparent and easy to work with. Our community is also facing a housing crisis like many other cities in this country. We have some amazing builders in our community that have done their best to keep building, even with the challenges of COVID and staffing issues. And I've been attending the EDC meetings to try to understand some of those unique challenges. And as I've spoke of before, I'm a strong advocate for our parks. I would like to make sure every neighborhood has a clean, well-maintained park in their neighborhood. I have a problem-solving mentality, and I'd love to bring that to city council. Thank you.
The fourth race is for position four. We'll start with Kate Dexter. Please unmute, and you have two minutes. Please unmute. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kate Dexter, and I have been a resident of Port Angeles for 11 years. I'm a single mom of two kids who attend Port Angeles Public Schools. I have a BA in history and public service and a master's degree in public administration. I enjoy working in the nursing department at Peninsula College and have for the last three years. I have almost four years of experience on city council and have served as deputy mayor, and am currently serving as mayor. Port Angeles is one of the best places to live, work, and play, and we, like every city, have work to do. We know that chronic homelessness is growing at a significant rate across the state, and working on solutions is a primary issue for many in our community, including the current city council. Likewise, more affordable housing in our community, and the need is only growing. We need to continue to support small businesses. We need to prioritize infrastructure resilience as we move into the future with projects like exploring the opportunity for use of groundwater when the L wall runs low. Building our capacity at City Hall and continuing to build strong relationships with community partners will also allow both council and staff to better serve our community. Supporting the growth of childcare opportunities so people can work is also a priority. My primary goal for 2022 is to see the municipal code update completed. Many of our other goals are impacted by our code and changes we make to it. Appropriate and smart changes to the code can help continue to reduce regulatory barriers and costs for new housing, which moves us closer to the goal of safe and affordable housing for all of our residents. One thing I hear consistently from community leaders and citizens is that they appreciate my professionalism in facilitating council meetings and making sure that everyone has a chance to be heard. I'm proud of the work that I have done representing the city of Port Angeles and as a council member, and I hope to continue that work. Thank you.
Position for candidate, John Proctor, please unmute, and you have two minutes.
Yes, my name is John Proctor, and I'm running for city council position number four. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for the invitation and an opportunity to speak here tonight. I, my education history is I attended New Mexico Highlands University, and I graduated with a degree in science, a Bachelor of Science degree, and a Master of Science degree. I also have a Doctor of Veterinary Medicine degree from Western State University. I own my own business for 34 years in private practice. I also own a farm and some industrial property in another state. So I'm used to looking at income versus expenditures. I have worked with people from all walks of life, from the very lowest to owners of large companies and CEOs, and I know how to get along and deal with people. I am retired, and I have the time to devote to this position if elected. I entered this race last spring simply because I was tired of looking at our city, and I felt that we need to address the fact that our city is looking more and more like Seattle and that surrounding area. Since last spring, there's not been a day gone by that I haven't devoted some time of the day, and sometimes and many times the whole day, to studying our situation here and in other cities. Through the course of the summer, I have come up with two-pronged solutions to addressing our city. One is a reactive solution, where you see a problem, and you find one or more solutions, and I can go into that later if there is any interest. Also, I have come up with a good program for addressing the vagrant and drug culture problem in our city. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to candidate questions and your answers. Part of my role is to fairly rotate the first answer to questions, which I will do my best to do properly. I will rotate by positions and candidates within positions. There are many of you, and I can't see you all, so I have a pre-established, I have pre-established the order to whom I will direct the question. Do not hesitate to tell me if I miss you on any question. It will be inadvertent. We're going to start with today's issues and end with vision for the future. The questions, again, they come from those submitted to the League's website and those that were directly submitted to me. One was mine, which I wrote after reviewing the city's strategic plan. Not surprisingly, similar questions were submitted in similar areas of interest. I have developed the questions to reflect those that were submitted. I've organized the questions into six categories, which I don't think will surprise you. Homelessness, pandemic-related, safety, business environment, climate change, and vision. So we will start, and I will be directing the first question to Latricia Suggs. And this is in the area of homelessness. Much of the work of the city council is around land use, zoning, allowances, restrictions. Since homelessness is a recognized problem, and some of it is related to the lack of affordable housing, what land use actions do you support to provide for more affordable housing? Latricia, position one, Latricia, you have one minute. Please unmute. Please unmute.
Hi, Bertha. Thanks. So what land use actions would I support to increase affordable housing? Well, currently, some of the land use actions that have been presented to council as a whole from the planning committee has been an increase in density within the city of Port Angeles. So you get more buildable lots within the city of Port Angeles, also increasing your residential, like your medium-high-density zones. Another thing that I would get back and support is increasing height requirements for buildings. So if you want to include, build apartment complexes, we can at least increase the height instead of a two-level apartment complex. We can increase it to three and maybe a four-level apartment complex. But that would be through the code update process that we're doing.
Position one also, Adam Garcia. Please unmute. You have one minute.
Yeah, so the housing crisis here in Port Angeles is a supply and demand issue. We have very little supply and a whole lot of demand. You know, projections show we're going to need a lot more housing to sustain our growth. And the quickest way to do that is going to be through apartment complexes. Now, through some of the discussions with the code update, I know the public's view on apartments is kind of hit or miss. But really, when it comes down to apartments, the public, from the participation that I saw anyway, was in favor of apartments that maintained a good look. They don't, people don't want to see giant concrete jungles here in Port Angeles. They want beautiful manicured areas that are able to sustain a lot of apartment complexes. And by doing that, you'll increase the housing density. You'll give more people an opportunity to travel throughout our housing market and open up places like in our affordable housing.
Position two, Mike French. Please unmute. You have one minute.
Thanks. You know, I think that one thing that we should recognize is we've picked much of the low-hanging fruit around land use and zoning with the 2019 land use reforms that our council passed. But one that is on my mind is CIPA exemptions, so the State Environmental Protection Act, I believe is what it's called. You know, going off of what Adam said, if we do want to find places in Port Angeles where apartment buildings would, number one, be appropriate under what the zoning rules are in that location, if we want those to be successful, we need to provide them as much flexibility as possible when it goes through the, you know, the state-created processes that they have to pass before they can really build. And those are often very time-consuming, very expensive. So for infill housing, there are things that we can do to make specific exemptions from some of that process, as long as it's not too close to critical, you know, environmental areas.
Position two, John Madden, please unmute, and you have one minute.
Okay. Now, I'd like to have a quick restatement of the question, please.
Yes, it has to do with land use, zoning, and allowances. What land use actions do you support to provide for more affordable housing?
I believe that affordable housing falls under a category of apartments primarily, because people are not going to just come directly from being homeless to buying a piece of property, going through the permit process, building a house. So the shortest link to affordable housing would be apartment complex building. And I know this is going to happen. So I'm in favor of buildings being created in appropriate places and in appropriate size with adequate parking. I've seen a lot of projects, especially in Seattle, where there is no parking. People are forced to live in apartments and travel great distances to even get home. So those are my concerns.
Position three, we'll start with Lindsay Schreman-Warren, and you're unmuted. You have one minute.
Thank you. So we still have more work to do to make it easier to build infill housing, like backyard cottages and more connected housing, like duplexes and apartments. We still have regulatory barriers in place that disincentivize homeowners from building those units on their property. We need to remove those. Some of those things are things like the separate utility connection requirement and parking space requirements. Parking should always be available, but we have a lot of parking on the street in most neighborhoods. And we need to manage parking more like a utility, rather than expect that it's, you know, basically forced on people and not having a choice. We need to redo our zoning codes, that we put the apartment buildings in the heart of our city and in walkable neighborhoods, rather than spots on them on the outskirts of the city, and then have to bring services, like medical services, out to those denser neighborhoods. And we also need to do a land capacity analysis to figure out if our zoning capacity is adequate to the projected population growth in our area. Thank you.
Also, position three, Jenna Stamper, please unmute, and you have one minute.
All right, so some immediate actions we can take, of course, are lowering some barriers, maybe even some fee breaks on utility hookups. And I do agree that the code, the form-based code that we're doing as a city right now is a good thing. Our community has spoken, and they want to see that our city go in a specific direction. And I like that idea. But just being more transparent as a city and making the process easier, especially when it comes to zoning variances with properties that are on the outskirts, because there is room for capacity in our urban growth areas. And it is important to have density within the city to make it more walkable for people. But there are other options in these urban growth areas. So I would focus on building infrastructure to these areas, tax incentives for people who choose to rent their homes out on a monthly basis, tax incentives for people who choose to turn their rentals into an Oxford house. And then, you know, duplexes are a great thing, just being really easy as a city to work with.
Position four, candidate Kate Dexter, please unmute, and you have one minute.
All right, thank you. Certainly, we have, as Ben mentioned, done a lot already to create land use opportunities, changing the code. One of the things that our current code work is looking at what we call form-based code. And currently, we're only looking at it in the business districts, but I think it really has the potential to shape land use outside of business districts, which will allow infill development, you know, duplexes and subdivision of homes, that sort of thing, to increase the amount of housing without changing the feel of a neighborhood. And I think that's one of the things people get concerned about when we talk about density is, I don't want an apartment building next door, but you could have a house that looks like a house, and it has four units. So that's something that I think is compelling. The other thing that Lindsay mentioned a little bit, but I want to elaborate on, I think, is requiring specific off-street parking creates, I didn't get to my point, but goes to stormwater. So, let's hope that.
Position four, John Proctor, you have one minute.
Yes, my first choice would be to build apartment complexes downtown, close to fire and police. close to fire and police services, and within walking distance of different stores, Safeway and whatnot. I contacted a good friend of mine who built, made his own building, apartment complexes in Seattle and in Portland, and asked him about it. And he said, in today's climate, that is not a realistic possibility. The costs of billing are too high. Now then, duplexes, I believe, small duplexes could be built. They don't have to go through, as I understand it, all of the regulations that maybe a large project would, and it'd be more affordable. Lastly, I think we should check in with Shag Housing. They're doing crazy stuff over on the other side of the water, and see if they'd be interested in coming here. One last thing, we have a lot of large vacant buildings downtown. I would see if maybe somebody would go in and refurbish some of those, rebuild them, and perhaps put small apartments in them. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to question two, and I'm going to start with John Proctor. Here is the question. And we're still about homelessness. How do we balance the rights of the homeless to have freedom of movement like residents with shelter, yet not let our public spaces be overwhelmed with encampments and related problems that develop? John, you have one minute.
I have studied that extensively this summer, and I traveled over to Auburn, Washington to visit with their manager in that city. He developed the program in Redmond, Washington. It's been adopted in Bellevue, he tells me, and it's been adopted in Auburn. And it's currently being adopted in Issaquah, he reports. And basically, they start off with a fixed structure building, a large building, and it's divided into a day center and a night center to start with. And what makes the thing go is they have a complex ordinance restricting camping on public property and parks. And what they do, it basically, it makes people uncomfortable to be living outside, and they kind of force them, not kind of, but they do force them to come in out of the weather, so to speak. And then they provide services for them, and it's a success. And it's a double-edged sword, and that people are going there from other cities for treatment. And other cities are sending people there for treatment, in a nutshell, a fast nutshell.
Position four, Kate Dexter, please unmute, and you have one minute.
I think the very first answer is we create more housing so that people have a place to live, and we continue to support wraparound services for people. So specifically, permanent supportive housing. And a good example of that is the support the council is providing for Peninsula Behavioral Health to move forward with their All View Motel project. We need more opportunities for people to be off the street if they're going to not be camping. And we need to be continuing to support the programs that we currently have, such as Rediscovery and the Community Paramedicine Program, to meet people where they are and get them to a point where they can safely and comfortably be indoors. Not everyone who's outside right now feels safe being inside. And so there's a lot of work to do and a lot of different issues around why people are outside. And we need to continue addressing it from a variety of perspectives and with a variety of tools.
Position three, we'll start with Jenna Stamper, please unmute, and you have one minute.
Okay, again, it's Gina, Gina Stamper. That's okay. Definitely taking a look at our code and ordinances that talk more or less about the person, which is important to talk about. But when you're talking about code and the barriers that we're facing is private property being on our city streets or in our parks or in our creeks. So it's okay to be homeless, and you can move about the city. But as a citizen who is sheltered, and I know they, they have things, so maybe possibly looking at a locker situation in some part of the city where they could store their belongings and have a code. Maybe it could be paid for by a community service of some sort. But something like that to home their belongings until they do find housing. I'm a big fan of no camping ordinances, as long as there are beds available, which with the Serenity House being complete, there should be plenty of beds available.
Position three, Lindsay Schormann-Warwin. Please unmute, and you, there you go, you have one minute.
So I, I mean, I hate to break it to some of my opponents, but no, there will not be enough beds available for the unsheltered homeless that we're experiencing in Clallam County after Serenity House expands the night-by-night shelter. That's simply not true. And I think I also heard another council candidate say that they want to encourage programs that people are gonna come from out of the area to participate in. I thought that was your root cause of this problem, and now you want to see some of those. So it's inconsistent. There's purported solutions being talked about here that are just factually not true. Mayor Dexter framed it well. We need to solve housing problems with housing, and that's gonna be the long-term solution. That said, in the short term, the city does respond when we hear complaints about homeless encampments. And that response solves that problem at a particular location, but really, it's just pushing the problem somewhere else. What we need is to be more cost-effective as a government and build housing, which is way cheaper than managing homelessness.
Position two, we'll start with John Madden. Please unmute, and you have one minute.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm aware of a lot of influx from other cities. People coming from other cities to live here. And they happen to be homeless or alcoholic, drug-affected people. And I know that some cities have a program where they provide bus tickets for those people to get back to where their friends and family are, where their support structure is. I'm not in favor of creating programs or building on programs that bring people to our city if they're not prepared to live here, like most of the people do. Most of the people move here to either rent a house or buy a house, and they don't make themselves a nuisance to society. It's not fair to them, and it's not fair to us.
Position two, Mike French, please unmute, and you have one minute.
Thanks. I think it's a great question. I think that, you know, the long-term solution is housing. How we get there in the short term is through partnerships and policies. Specifically, we need to coordinate policy with the county. We need to be on the same page. Shelter is not the end goal. Shelter is good as long as it's moving people, you know, systematically into permanent housing. That system is called the Coordinated Entry System. That's a system that we've been working on with the county homelessness task force on improving in partnership with Serenity House. And those partnerships are gonna be crucial. The Rediscovery Program that's operated by the Olympic Peninsula Community Clinic, the, you know, working with Peninsula Behavioral Health as they try to expand their permanent housing inventory. We just provided funding to the Housing Authority as they're in the first stages of building permanent housing for low-income residents on the West Side. So I think that, you know, these are solvable problems. But I also want to just really quickly say, I don't think we're at the point yet where we're overwhelmed. I want us to take this in context. I feel very safe moving around my city, and I don't want us to try to kind of overbalance the rhetoric around this issue.
Position one, Adam Garcia. Please unmute, and you have one minute.
Yeah, so, you know, when it comes down to, you know, trying to quote-unquote solve the issue, you know, we have this concept that we're just going to build houses, and we're just going to house everybody. It's nonsense. The true way that we're gonna get people out of this situation is to provide them with services, to get them coordinated services, to get them integrated into everything that's currently available in Clallam County. Now, here in Port Angeles, we're kind of the hub for Clallam County, as we're the county seat in the largest city in, what, two or three county, two-county range. So it's going to be something that we focus on and something that we have to do. John Proctor's idea of bringing them into an isolated area or a more centralized area would make it very easy for services around the county to be able to get in contact, in constant contact with these people, and help Serenity House and whomever else is involved with the coordinated entry program to get the word out and get them centrally, or get them the access that they need.
Position one, Latricia Suggs, please unmute, and you have one minute.
Hi. How do you balance the right of the homeless to be able to move about? Well, being homeless is not criminal, and it's a very vulnerable situation. We have many people in our community that are live paycheck to paycheck and can be on the verge of homelessness. But I think our services that has been offered by the, with the city of Port Angeles in partnership with Peninsula Behavioral Health, with Olympic Peninsula Community Clinic, trying to remember all the acronyms, but I think those partnerships is what's gonna help. Also, again, those wraparound services, providing stable housing for them to get on their feet for housing. We also need to promote increasing funding for those housing services and for those mental health services. But there's a lot of studies out there that provide really great recommendations that came out of Clallam County. And I think we need to work on those recommendations that have been provided.
Our third question, I will be starting with Lindsay, and the question is pandemic-related. Most recently, the state mandated indoor mask-wearing, and the local health officer mandated restaurants provide indoor dining to people who can demonstrate they are fully vaccinated. Both were said to be done to control the spread of the Delta virus. Both were seen by some as an infringement on individual rights. The question related to that is, does the city and city council have a role through advocacy or policy to reconcile the protection of individual rights with the need to control the spread of the virus? In other words, to do both, and how? Lindsay Schormann-Warwin, you unmuted, you have one minute.
Thanks. I mean, the city has a public health role. The mission of a local government like the city with general powers is to protect health, safety, and welfare. We protect public health through sanitation, through clean drinking water, through providing police and fire services. We are not the lead local government for infectious disease management. That's the county. The county licenses restaurants. The county manages this pandemic. So our role in the city is to support the measures that the county is taking in order to address this serious pandemic, and support not having an overflowing hospital, which is really bad for all of our residents. So we, as a city, should not be speaking contrary to what is sound, research-based, scientifically-supported positions by the county health officer. And we just need to do the math to understand the problems that my opponent's about to advocate for.
Also, position three, Jenna Stamper, you, did I say it wrong?
That's okay.
You have one minute.
Okay. The county is the main people when it comes to this pandemic. And I am always gonna be a strong advocate in my personal and professional life of medical freedom and an individual's right to choose. I do believe that that is their role, and that's the decision that they have made. And I don't think that any one decision, any group of people is gonna agree on 100%. It's never gonna happen. There's always gonna be some people that favor one way or the other. And it's okay to have differing opinions, and it's okay to talk about it. And it's okay to respect other people's decisions and what they want to do with their body. It's just like a religion or a tribe, you respect the way that they want to live their lives and their bodies. And as a city, we need to really protect the individual and our businesses. And I don't think that our restaurants really needed this extra burden. Thank you.
Position four, Kate Dexter, please unmute, and you have one minute.
Thank you. Particularly with the, to address the issue of the the role, I think, I recently had a conversation with our city attorney and asked a question about whether we would be fearing out of our lane to, as a group, publicly make any kind of a comment or support or not for Dr. Berry's health orders. And he said, not only would you, are you not, would you not be in your lane, you guys aren't even on the same road, right? She has, we're in a pandemic, and she's making hard choices to try to protect our community. And I guess I might be getting off-base a little bit with the mask mandate. I think the fact that we're not seeing a lot of spread in schools is a really good indicator that masks are working well. So I hope that we can continue to maintain that through the pandemic.
Also, position four, John Proctor, please unmute, and you have one minute.
Would you please repeat that question through the answers? I've kind of lost track of the question.
Does the city or city council have a role through advocacy or policy to reconcile the protection of individual rights with the need to control the spread of the virus? In other words, to do both, and how?
I think it's an individual thing. I can only speak for myself. If I was a council member, I, my and my wife have both been vaccinated. We were in line early. As a practicing veterinarian, in my knowledge, I'm trained in virology, bacteriology, pathogenesis, diagnosis, and treatment of many of these diseases. And they're, they're all different. This is a new disease. And the problem is, is they mutate and change, and that's typical of viruses. And I don't pretend to speak as a very knowledgeable person for this virus. I don't think anybody else should either. I use masks, and I think any man, or I hate to use the word mandates, but any direction should come from our health officers and CDC. The city council has no business telling people how to, how to live their lives, and mandates should be very deliberate. Thank you.
Position number one, Latricia Suggs, you have one minute.
Hi. It is, I agree with a lot of what my peers have said, Lindsay, Kate, Mike. The city's job is to protect health, safety, and welfare. But we need to recognize that our public health officer, Dr. Berry, has a tough job. She's authorized underneath the state of Washington, revised code of Washington, to do her job. And she's doing it well, under a lot of pressure that she's receiving from people. I think that, you know, she works with other health directors, county health directors. She gets her recommendations from the CDC, National Institute of Health. She follows the science and makes the recommendations, and I really support what she has done. And I think that's what our job is, to defer to our county health director and follow the recommendations from them.
Also, position one, Adam Garcia, please unmute, and you have one minute.
Yeah, I think it's a little silly that we have current city council members saying that we don't have a role for advocacy. I can think of several topics that a city council has advocated or against that were outside of their lane. But it's, so it's an interesting idea that this is somehow not, as it directly impacts the city or the citizens and the businesses within Port Angeles. You know, so I do think that the city council has an advocacy role for issues that directly impact the citizens and businesses within Port Angeles. And as far as the mandate for the restaurants goes, our, there's a lot of turmoil in that within our local populace. So I do think that it's the city council's role to support the county in making their decisions. But it's also our role to ask them the hard questions, to justify what they're doing with local data, not statewide, ever anything, but with local information, as they're making it local decisions that impact our people and our businesses.
Position two, Mike French, please unmute, and you have one minute.
Thanks. I do think we have a role in advocacy, but you know, one point that I really just think is important for us to Thanks. I I do think we have a role in advocacy, but you know, one point that I really just think is important for us to realize. Our neighboring state Idaho is literally rationing healthcare. That's a far greater restriction on individual rights than any of the mandates that we're under. You know, meaning if you're in a car accident in certain places in Idaho, you might not get the same treatment that you would expect an emergent situation would require. Uh, as a local restaurant owner, I'm happy to shoulder the extra burden that this mandate, the the our local county health officer's mandate places on us. Because I think it ensures that our kids get to stay in school. And it helps to ensure that our hospital system and our essential healthcare workers are not overwhelmed. And that to me, again, is far greater when it comes to individual liberty than having to show proof of vaccination to eat indoors. There are reasonable accommodations for any of these things. There's takeout food, there's outdoor seating for many restaurants. That is not an infringement on individual rights. That is just a a minor inconvenience because we're in an emergency.
Also, position two, John Madden, uh, please unmute and you have one minute.
Okay, as a business owner, this is a kind of a central issue for me. I believe in personal choice. And I am the voice of health and healing for this community. There have been entirely too many businesses going under, so the people have to have representation. My constituents tell me they feel manipulated and abandoned, and I will be that microphone that they've been needing for years now. Thank you very much.
Okay, to question four, which will be about safety and John Madden, I will be starting with you. Uh, what what are your residents tell our constituents telling you about safety and law enforcement? And what should be done? John, you have one minute, John Madden.
The first thing that the people outlined to me without me even asking is when they find out that I'm running for city council, they say, that's great. We need to do something about this, uh, this drug culture, the vagrants that are that are bumming around town, making a a tremendous environmental disaster out of what we love. This is our town. We need to take care of this in a more direct approach. Um, and the police, the law enforcement personnel that that we have on staff will do an excellent job. They are on board to do that job. If the city council works together to to make that a priority for them. Last year, we saw how things can get out of control quite reasonably, quite unreasonably in the city of Seattle. Didn't end well, so that's what I'm trying to prevent here. Thank you.
Position two, Mike French, uh, you have one minute.
Thank you. Being a downtown business owner, I definitely think there's a lot of hope to see, you know, more downtown a visibility of our our law enforcement. But I also think it's really important when we talk about this issue to listen to what our actual, you know, public safety employees are saying. I had a really good conversation with an EMT that works for the city of Port Angeles about how it's really the call volume that is, it's, you know, it it chips away at you. Um, that you're running from call to call and many of the calls are people that are experiencing substance use disorder and other things that are really, you know, overwhelming the system with these small calls. And and then you have to also respond to fires and car accidents, all these other, you know, emergent situations. And so, you know, I think that from a policy position, making sure that we are investing in upstream interventions that can reduce the call volume that can take those problems off of the plate of our law enforcement and emergency service. It's really crucial and that's where I think our rediscovery program has been very, um, you know.
All right, position one, Adam Garcia. Please unmute.
Yeah, can I get a repeat of the question real quick, please?
Sure. What are the residents, your residents or constituents telling you about safety and law enforcement? Enforcement and what should be done?
Yeah, so when I, when I'm out and about and I'm, you know, people come up to me, my family talks to me. I know, I I grew up here, I know a lot of people. It's, they don't feel like we have enough officers and they feel that the the police officers are probably stretched too thin. And, you know, we see on Facebook, you know, we see the police chief and riding his bike downtown on the waterfront trail. We see, you know, I see officers all the time, you know, in on patrol. But I agree that there could, uh, a bigger presence would be appreciated and likely helpful. The presence itself could potentially impact the call volume. I know that in order to do that, it's a money thing, just like anything else that we're going to be talking about here tonight. And finding ways in the budget to make that happen are tricky. And if it was easy, it would have already been done, I'm sure. So, uh, I think finding ways to work within the budget to perhaps get an extra officer to would be a good thing. But of course, I'd want to run all of that through the, uh, through the police chief, just to find his needs and wants there.
Also, position one, Latricia Suggs, please unmute, you have one minute.
Um, what I'm hearing when I talk with folks and when I have been out at other events is people are asking about code enforcement. Um, they're really glad that code enforcement is back after a six-year hiatus. Um, but I I think that there's an interest to, um, i- increase the the kind of the abilities of code enforcement to be able to respond quicker to some of the issues that we see on on property that is impacting environmental health and public safety. I I I think that is what I'm hearing. A a lot of people are really pleased about our current police department. They're they're really thrilled and they feel that we have a really great police department. But I think code enforcement is what I'm hearing is they'd like to see more of that and to to see action taken a little bit quicker.
Position four, John Proctor, please unmute and you have one minute.
Yes, uh, I personally would like to see more, uh, police presence on our streets. I have said that all along. That's one of my primary goals in running for city council. Uh, my wife and I moved here in 2010 and I've seen less street pleasant presence, uh, speeding. Irregular, unsafe driving through our streets. And also, I think it would be good to have a a presence in our downtown area. I think, uh, shoppers would feel, um, safer perhaps. Also, I'd like to see presence, uh, around our businesses, uh, early morning in the winter, late in the afternoon when it's dark. Uh, some of our female, uh, workers, they they feel uncomfortable, uh, just going out to their car or coming into work in the dark. And I've had two, uh, two individuals, two women tell me about unsafe pad that they don't feel good about. Um, so I'm for more police presence.
Also, position four, Kate Dexter, you have one minute.
Thank you. Um, so many ways to answer this question. I actually generally hear from people that, um, which is not to say some people don't feel safe. But I generally hear from people that they appreciate the work our police department is doing um, and concerns about them being overworked. So certainly call volume is a part of that. But I think that the, one of the pieces, um, to Adam's point about advocacy, that we really need to continue to maintain, um, a high level of advocacy at the state level um, to address the police reform legislation that was recently passed, some of which needs just some clarification and some of which has really created a problem for our officers. And to the, to that end, making those changes so that we can maintain the seasoned officers that we have and continue to recruit, uh, good people to be a part of our our really outstanding police department.
Position three, Jenna Stamper. Uh, please unmute, you have one minute.
Okay, so, uh, public safety, what I hear a lot, um, since I am a mom and we frequent a lot of our city parks. Um, like I said, at our new dream park, uh, almost probably every time that we've been there, there has been somebody in the bathroom, taking up a stall, doing things that are not great to have around children and are not necessarily, uh, safe in a in a public safety, infectious disease sort of way. Um, I think that our police department does an amazing job. I've done a lot of ride-alongs with our police officers and our sheriffs. And I think that, um, there is a lot of, a lot of great things happening. Uh, it's definitely a capacity thing. We would of course love to see more officers on our streets. But even if we can just get some very frequent stops at these places that we are having, um, lots of problems. And I definitely agree with John Proctor. I have also heard that about women who are getting off in the hours, especially as it starts to get darker earlier, that they don't necessarily feel safe in the downtown areas and some other, um, of our commercial districts when they get off work.
Also, position three, Lindsay Schorman Warbin.
Well, I mean, it's really easy to make campaign promises to say expanding public safety funding. But, you know, the question becomes, where do you fund it? And some of us have been working on the reality of that and not just the empty campaign rhetoric that we're hearing in this answer. I would say our opponents also need to listen to the presentation by the Port Angeles Police Department, our partners at Olympic Peninsula Community Clinic that happened this spring at a work session. At that presentation, what they said is that they need exits from homelessness if they're going to solve the homelessness issues. Um, when people are advocating that we use the existing police resources to do patrols, what you're saying is that you want to take away resources from investigating violent crimes and crimes against children. I think that is more important than investigating patrols. And our officers are frequently involved in collaboration with other neighboring law enforcement jurisdictions. Um, I think we exercise some of the best practices in policing. Um, you know, Mr. Garcia tried to say that, you know, we're bringing in national issues. But what I hear is our opponent is trying to take national discussions and apply them to a local police department as a best practice. It's not the case.
Okay, we're about to go to our fifth question. And I want to tell you, it's all right if you need to ask me to repeat the question. I'm happy to do that. There's a lot of information coming and I can understand that in observing and then thinking of your own answer that you might want to hear a repeat. So don't worry about that. We have about half an hour more. Are you all okay for doing that? Half an hour more, are you up for it? All right, we'll do it. Okay, uh, I have another safety question, just one more. And I'm going to start this with Latricia Suggs. And the question is, do you believe local governments should be able to enact local ordinances to reduce gun violence that are more stringent than state law?
Well, um, I guess I've never given any thoughts to in acting stringent gun ordinances. Really haven't had much. Boy, I'm at a loss for words on this one. State laws, I I know that in the process states can enact more stringent codes um, than what federal law can enact. I'm not sure what the law states around a a county or a city enacting more stringent codes than the state codes. Um, I I would have to, I would need advice, legal advice, um, before even would want to make a statement on that. Because I don't, I I think that you can easily get caught up in, um, stating something incorrectly. Um, I I would support what comes out of recommendations from those that study the issue and and present those recommendations.
Uh, also, position one, Adam Garcia.
So I'll I'll somewhat agree with with Latricia in that I'm not overly familiar with the legality there. Uh, but that said, I would say I'm generally opposed to a city, city ordinances that would be more stringent than state law, only because of enforcement issues. Uh, you know, we have, you have city and county, you know, county isn't impacted by city laws, trying to, you know, to where, who lives where. It's a bad idea, just generally around. I think enforcement would just be a nightmare. So generally, no, if it were legally allowed, it would depend on the ordinance and I'm not quite sure what ordinances I would support, to be completely honest.
Okay, position two, Mike French.
Uh, so it's a really interesting question, as other people have pointed out. I think that, you know, um, when we're presented with questions like this, it's important to think of how do we legislate as a council? And when these questions are given to me, I go through a series of questions, you know, what are other cities doing on this issue? If there's a lot of activity on that, we can learn from other cities and how they're crafting legislation. Is there legal exposure you could be creating for your municipality around this issue? Is legislating going to create legal risk or people might sue you and you might have an extended court case that would cost a lot of money for your municipality that you might not be able to handle? What is the state law regarding preemption around this issue? In many states, the state says, this is our issue, this is not a local issue, and they have the right to do that. And then, you know, how is the issue settled in, you know, more of the Supreme Court federal law? And in this one, DC versus Heller is kind of up in the air at some level. You know, there, so right now, I would say, my understanding is the answer is kind of yes, but we don't really know. And I don't like going into that uncharted territory with the issue kind of up in the air at that higher level.
Also, position two, John Madden.
Now, how did I get turned sideways?
Yeah, how'd that happen?
Well, it'll be interesting, I guess. Uh, you know, people are getting their rights taken away everywhere you look these days. And I'm big on the Second Amendment, so I'll just save you a whole bunch of time with that. That's my answer.
Okay, now I wonder if we can somehow help you turn right side up there. No, I guess not. Okay. Uh, position three, uh, I can see you're already there. Lindsay, please unmute, you have a minute.
I'd love a lot more time. Um, I'm a constitutional attorney and I focus on issues of the relative power of local, state and federal governments. Uh, and so, yeah, uh, quickly, um, we have three levels of government, federal, state and local that are all required to protect people's rights, health, safety and welfare. The Second Amendment protects your right of self-defense, uh, which is what the courts have said. Um, in Washington, uh, we generally have a state law that preempts local governments. Whether that's right or not is, I think, a question for how we want to theorize the role of local governments. Um, does it make sense for us to have local police departments? Why not just have a, you know, Washington State Patrol do all law enforcement? Wouldn't that be more efficient, avoid a patchwork, that sort of thing? What we've seen in the last several decades is that a preemption, usually by the state over local governments, has been weaponized by groups like the American Legislative Exchange Council to prevent local governments from making laws to protect people's health, safety and welfare.
Also, position three.
Can you restate the question again, please?
Sure. Uh, do you believe local governments should be able to enact law, local ordinances to reduce gun violence that are more stringent than state laws? You have one minute.
Um, I don't believe we really have a gun violence problem in Port Angeles. Uh, and I'm also a strong advocate for our constitution and our Second Amendment. So I I don't believe I would be in support of any additional. And I don't even think that's our our lane either. So I don't think that that's something that the city council would need to vote on.
Okay, position four, Kate Dexter, you have one minute.
All right, um, it is, it is, that's a a doozy of a question for one minute, uh, because there's so many ways we could look at it. But, um, one of the things that comes to my mind, because I don't actually know the answer. Um, and what I believe in this case is it seems to be a question of, um, could we, uh, should we, um, but can we, um, is the real question. Um, and I don't know the answer to that, like a lot of other people here. Um, one of the things that comes to mind, so there's preemption and then, um, I think also within that is when the state sets limits and then the cities can also set limits, as an example, tobacco use. We could set by rule, uh, by the, by state law, the city could set a smoking uh, age limit that's lower than the states, but we can't go above it. And so I think this, I don't know, the the lawyer in the group may be able to speak to this particular issue. But, um, but I think it's, it's a tricky one that I don't know the answer to.
Uh, also, position four, John Proctor, you have a minute.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank our local Well, first of all, I'd like to thank our local attorney for informing us about three levels of government. I'm sure that's news to everybody in this forum. That being uh, taken care of, uh, no, I'm against any uh, gun laws locally. I think the person that asked that question probably is not very knowledgeable in uh, the gun laws that have been passed and exist. Our Second uh, Amendment covers that pretty well. Now, in the uh, Washington DC case, Heller versus Washington DC, they had a very restrictive gun law. And that has been shot down, along with a couple of other cities that had stringent gun laws. So I think the whole question is out of line, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Uh, next question will go to business environment and it will, I will direct it first to John Proctor. Um, the, given all the above, homelessness, pandemic, mandate, safety. Impact businesses, many who are struggling to survive the lockdowns and restrictions of the pandemic. Is the city doing enough or could it do more to su- support businesses? If so, what specifically could the city do?
Uh, personally, I think the city should stay the heck out of this. This is a, it's a cat fight out there. Uh, fifty percent of the people uh, feel strongly one way and the other fifty percent are in the opposite direction. I think the businesses are struggling to survive. Uh, those who survived last year through the shutdown, uh, were very fortunate. They come back and now uh, mandates are putting more pressures on them to enforce the laws. And I don't know how, um, some of these mandates came to be. Our uh, food service got picked on. They had four hundred and sixty-nine reported cases on September eighth. And they had eight cases reported in the recent week. Childcare pre-K had four hundred and thirty-three cases all reported and fourteen in the previous week. And retail had three hundred and ninety-six cases reported and eleven the previous week. So how do we pick on the, the restaurants? We need to uh, sit back and reevaluate this whole thing. Thank you.
Also, position four, Kate Dexter.
Sure, I'm, I'm going to take a broader approach to that question and um, look at just in general, what has the city done? And what could we do um, to um, provide support for small businesses? Um, I think one of the things that we have done, um, is provide rental relief, utility relief. Um, to uh, including business for, we included businesses in that relief um, support that we provided. And so, um, certainly we did that. We, we have a limited budget to work with. So from a financial standpoint, I think we did a pretty good job with that. Another thing that I think, um, you know, tourism is a big part of um, what supports our small businesses. And with the border closed, um, we've seen a lot of people traveling locally, but we know that may not be, we, we suspect that might not be sustained. So one of the things that the council is doing, um, is providing support to the Black Ball Ferry Line, which I think um, is really important to our community, both from a commerce standpoint and also from a tourism standpoint. And I think that is something that we are doing to support small businesses.
Okay, um, position three, Gina Stamper. Please unmute, you have one minute.
May I also have a rereading? Thank you.
Sure, um. Of all of the above, homelessness, pandemic, mandate, safety, impact businesses, many of whom are struggling to survive the lockdowns and restrictions of the pandemic. Is the city doing enough or could it do more to support business? If so, what specifically?
Okay, so I, I'm also agree with uh, Mr. Proctor. I think the city just needs to step out of it and really let businesses, you know, make their own decisions. You know, it's, it's their business and they should be able to make the decisions that they think are going to be best for their business. So I think as little barriers as possible to help these businesses grow and thrive and stop putting so much um, barriers on them and, and encouraging them in a way when there is, when they are doing good things for our community and our economic um, development. I, I use for an example, the coffee box and I've used them before because they did a really great transformation of a building downtown. And I don't think our only focus should be on our downtown. We need to look more at our C Street corridors and our first and front street corridors and help those businesses as well. And when someone does something awesome, give them a shout out, give them, you know, some free publicity. And as a city, maybe, you know, as a council, go and, and support them and, and put it on the website or on Facebook and give them, you know, a little bit of love.
All right, Lindsay, you're ready? Um, you have one minute.
Yeah, so what the city did at the beginning of the pandemic was we pushed all of the CARES Act funding out into the community. We didn't keep any of it for our own budget, uh, even though that wasn't. Um, so we put a lot of it into rental relief and um, utility relief and that included for businesses. And we also waived fees on um, business um, fees that the city collects. Uh, as Ms. Stamper said, there's a lot of regulations, not all of those are from the city. I'd love to get into more specifics if you're actually willing to name things that you want to change. Um, in terms of how we got to this point with restaurants, uh, if anyone's been following the Emergency Operations Center briefings on Fridays at ten AM, um, you'd know that Dr. Barry was seeing the serious issue of unmasked people eating in close quarters inside restaurants. Um, her other option would have been to shut restaurants down or put capacity limitations in. So I don't understand why people think it's um, business friendly to um, have preferred those options instead. Thank you.
Um, position two, or uh, yeah, position two, John Madden. You, and you're uh, unmute, thank you.
Okay, could you please restate the question?
Sure, um. Is the city, there's, businesses have been struggling to survive lockdowns and restrictions of the pandemic. And there's homelessness and other influences going on in the city. Is the city doing enough or could it do more to support businesses? If so, what specifically?
Well, let's see now, I think the reason, one of the main things that we have here is, is where government is pressing down on local businesses. Uh, we have people like, like this uh, Schromann Warren guy talking down to people all the time. I mean, it's obviously clear to me that, that he puts himself above a lot of these problems. Um, and our focus is to bring back the focus on the individual, especially the local businesses that have been hammered during this last year. This has been crazy. I think they, they need less um, regulation. And they need an advocate that's going to be carrying their voice into the city council in a transparent and effective manner.
Also, position two, Mike French.
Good news for the business community, I'm a small business owner who has been on the council for the last four years talking about these issues at a, on a monthly basis at our council meetings. Uh, I think that in our country, we have a lot of focus on the tax and regulation side of how the government and business uh, communities interact and not enough discussion about the demand side. Businesses need demand to sell services and that demand comes from the public, from working families, from working people. When we put all of our CARES funding back to the people, that helped businesses. I thought, and it didn't just help the businesses that got utility relief or rental relief. But I'd also like to highlight, as our mayor pointed out, last night our council voted to provide half a million dollars in pandemic relief to the Black Ball Ferry Line because we view that as a crucial business partner that is going to help in that pandemic recovery effort. They're going to support all of our local businesses, you know, by just doing what they do. We want to make sure they stay open. And of course, I can't go, let this go unmentioned. We're partnering with the Chamber of Commerce to do strategic planning for our downtown business district. That's really going to be crucial for that pandemic response and that vision process of the next five to 10 years downtown.
Position number one, Adam Garcia, please unmute. You have one minute.
Yeah, so, you know, when it comes to the mandates and kind of surviving and then recovering from them. You know, contrary to what Lindsay might have you think, the health officer has more than two options at her, at her disposal. She does not backs mandate or shut down. It's way, that's just silly. So the, what needs to happen is that the city needs to take an advocacy role to help remove some of these mandates that are being forced upon businesses. Allow businesses to determine, after being educated by the health officer. Allow the businesses to determine what rules and regulations that they want on their own business so that they can survive or fail on their own decisions. Now, until that happens, I think the city is obligated to help, you know, provide funding for rental relief, utility relief to the businesses themselves. And then also, you know, as, as Mike pointed out, to the citizens because it's the citizens that are ultimately going to be the ones purchasing from the businesses themselves. So any help to the people also helps businesses. Thank you.
Position one, also, Latricia Suggs, you have one minute.
Um, thanks, I, you know, I um, support and agree with a lot of things that uh, Mike, Lindsay and Kate have already brought up about rental and utility relief, waiving fees. Uh, but we've also allowed and made changes to um, the code that would allow businesses to use outside um, areas, um, parking lots and stuff. So that when we were focusing on, you know, allowing businesses to um, use their outside areas because we were having capacity issue, you know, we had capacity limits and stuff. So we did work with them on that. We also partner with EDC who is, um, and have a contract working with them as a strong partner um, to promote and help process pandemic relief assistance for our local businesses. And working with EDC, um, they had, they have worked with a lot of businesses to get that support. Um, we also promote um, multimodal options of transportation so that people can get down to our local commercial districts and um, be, you know, supporting our businesses.
All right, we're going on to another question. I'll go to one on climate change. And Lindsay Schromann Warwin, you will be first up on this one. If elected or re-elected, what climate actions, if any, would you support the city to take to reduce its carbon emissions and overall environmental impact?
Some of the main work I've been doing on that is figuring out how we have more of a walkable, livable city where we can live in neighborhoods where you don't have to have a high transportation greenhouse gas emission um, footprint. And that involves a lot of the work that has already been discussed in land use planning, uh, form-based code. Um, and it involves us um, really making that transition in how we work with our streets. So pedestrian safety projects like what we see on Lord's and Boulevard on Lincoln Street help to make it easier for people to walk and bike and take the bus, uh, rather than drive in single occupancy vehicles. That's a huge part of our uh, fossil fuel footprint. And that has to do a lot more with how we do land use than the specific technology we use to get around in town. I'll also add, um, you know, we're going to see a lot more people moving to the Pacific Northwest and especially to places like the Olympic Peninsula. Uh, and we need to incorporate that population into our cities so that we don't end up uh, losing the rural character of our neighborhood or of our peninsula.
Also, position three, Gina Stamper, please unmute, you have one minute.
Um, um, I think there's a lot of things we can do on a city level, um, that have a twofold kind of purpose. Uh, the trees that I've talked about in the past, the lower growing, faster growing, uh, less root invasive trees that we can plant throughout the city that help with, um, you know, the climate of, of being and wanting to be on our streets and our sidewalks. Um, if there is really going to be global warming, then that's something that we need to think about now. So these trees are mature by the time these things are happening. Um, empty space, and, and talking about certain parking lots that we could um, repurpose into green areas. When you talk about carbon emissions, our national park is a huge contributor of that with tourists. So uh, I would like, and then this is envisioning for the future down the road, but a, a gondola system of some sort that is um, a transportation up to the national park. So we aren't having that kind of traffic, but also the walkable city and the parks and having smaller um, districts and stores in different parts of town to help with that.
Position four, Kate Dexter, please unmute, you have one minute.
Can you please repeat the question for me?
Uh, yes, if elected or re-elected, what climate actions, if any, would you support the city to take to reduce its carbon emissions and overall environmental impact?
Thank you, um, so I'm going to interpret this in a couple of different ways and maybe a little bit differently than previous answers. But um, if, if I, in answering this, I am thinking of the city as its individual entity and what can it as an organization do um, to ru- to reduce its carbon impact? And we are doing a few things already. We're putting in, um, as we are redoing parking lot, uh, the parking lot, putting in um, better uh, stormwater mitigation and electric charger, electric vehicle charging stations. Um, that's certainly not going to solve the climate crisis, but would reduce our carbon footprint. Um, and we are moving through the Climate Action Plan. And I think that's a really important document that we um, adopted a couple of years ago. I think it's a little hard to keep track of time right now. Um, and I think continuing to move through the, the steps that we've outlined in the Climate Action Plan will be a really important uh, project for us to continue.
Position four, John Proctor.
Uh, the carbon footprint left by Port Angeles is, doesn't even make a dot compared to what goes on in uh, in the world. However, uh, what we can do, the future is in um, uh, battery operated, operated automobiles. And I think our city can start gradually switching over to uh, to uh, vehicles that don't use fossil fuels. Also, charging stations, we need to be addressing those. Another thing coming in the future, and there's a lot of them right now, is the uh, battery operated bicycles. I walk the trails almost daily with uh, my little schnauzer and uh, we see battery operated bicycles all over the place. And I believe there's going to be more and more of them. And I think uh, those are the ways of the future. And they're, well, maybe not the future, they're here right now. And uh, that's about all we can do, I think.
Position one, Latricia Suggs, please mute.
Um, well, yeah, I know, I know what you meant. Definitely, there's things that um, have already been stated about electric vehicles and, and having more charging stations. We, we have some downtown, um, we, we plan to have, increase more there, city, um, in the city parking lot in the future. But I also think that we need to look at um, im- implementing more um, renewable energy systems within our buildings um, for, for the city of Port Angeles. Um, but I think that one key thing is we need to keep our, our growth, our footprint within our city limits. Um, because again, we need to get people out of the cars. Cars are, are biggest contributor to greenhouse gases. So we need to have walkable living neighborhoods, um, that has been talked about and mentioned here um, several times. But it's about getting people out of their cars and walkable multimodal transportation options for our, our city. And um, I, I would like to see that happen.
Uh, Adam Garcia, also position one, you have one minute.
Yeah, I agree with uh, with Latricia on this one actually about it being more about focusing as far as the city is concerned, focusing on getting people out of their cars and spending more time outside. You know, which is kind of a weird thing to think about when we live here in the Pacific Northwest is we need to encourage people to get outside, but it's true. Um, you know, our parks right now, not in the best of shape. You know, we, we have a couple of parks that are very nice, but we have a whole lot more that are not. And so, that are scattered throughout our community. And so I think focusing on getting those up and running would be a good thing. Encourage people to stay local and not be driving around as much uh, for our, for our families. And then our downtown area, give people a reason to stay downtown longer, to be there, do more their local, their shopping local. I think that would be a great way to encourage our business, uh, business community. And then also to, in the long run, impact the uh, greenhouse gases and all of that, that we're going to be looking at trying to diminish. Thank you.
Position two, Mike French.
Yeah, I think, I think this is an area where we need to find ways to get to win-win situations. I think some of this has already been mentioned, but you know, denser housing in, in mixed-use walkable neighborhoods creates more economic activity in those neighborhoods while also reducing the overall environmental impact. Urban trees improve the quality of a neighborhood while also reducing their stormwater, you know, the cost for stormwater mitigation. And um, you know, I would also say this is an issue. And, you know, I would also say this is an issue where it's really helpful to have a really diverse city council because this is, this is something where I can kind of take a backseat on policy as we have people like Latricia and Kate who are really much more, you know, subject matter experts than me. And so, you know, I think that, you know, having a really diverse council makes it so that when issues like this come up, we have a really good broad base of knowledge about this throughout the council. And not every person needs to be an expert on everything.
John Madden, you have, please unmute, you have one minute.
Okay, now, global warming has been debunked for many years as unscientific. It's been been debunked for decades now. And the fear mongers now have have morphed that, that bugaboo into climate change. So there are a number of things you can, you can look at. You can put any kind of a perceived problem under a microscope and see things that you wouldn't ordinarily see, things that could scare you. We've been scared out of our wits for decades about things like acid rain and institutional racism, most recently, and white supremacy and gun violence. All of these things are designed to control the populace. And I think people are getting a clue that this needs to be, this needs to be tempered with a sense of reason. I believe most people are fairly reasonable and they've got their eyes open now.
Okay, we have come to the end of our questions and I need to congratulate all of you instead for staying within the time, for being responsive to the questions. I wish there was an audience here so we could applaud. You made my job a lot, you made my job much easier. So we're going to go to closing remarks. And again, we're going to do that in reverse order, which means that the first person for closing remarks will be John Proctor. John Proctor, you have one minute. Please, please unmute. Please unmute, John.
There, am I unmuted?
Yeah, you are.
Okay, hey, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I think their questions, for the most part, were very good and informative. And I learned a lot myself from the other candidates who are participating. And I look forward to participating in future debates. And that's all I have to say. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Kate Dexter, you have one minute. This is position four.
All right. Some people might have heard this before, but I'm going to repeat it because I, I mean it and I, and I think it's important. One of the most important things I've learned in my four years working in city government is that I cannot accomplish anything alone. Getting things done means working with others from staff to council, partner organizations, and most importantly, the people of Port Angeles. Everything we do as elected officials requires others, even and perhaps most especially getting elected in the first place. So today I ask you to join me in continuing the good work we are doing by reelecting me to the Port Angeles City Council. Thank you.
Now, the candidates for position three, we'll start with Gina Stamper. Please unmute, thank you. You have one minute.
Okay, and I just wanted to thank League of Women Voters for having us here today. It's always nice to get together and bounce some ideas off each other and and learn something. So I hope that I have demonstrated how I can bring some innovative ideas and a problem solving nature to to the city council position. I truly care about the city of Port Angeles. I've grown up here my whole life, went away, came back, started a business. And we really try to be contributing members of our society and try to make this a better place that my children want to come back to someday. I really appreciate it and I hope I earned your vote today.
Also, position three, Lindsay Schraman Warwin, you have one minute.
Thanks, I'll be blunt. I'm not sure why some of these non incumbent candidates are running because they either support the work we're already doing on the city council or they're giving empty campaign promises that seem to be coming more from Fox News rather than what is actually happening in our own community. When you peel under the surface, they rely on failed theories that have been tried for decades, like trickle down economics. As a community, we know better than to keep falling for that because these policies are what has led to the bad outcomes like homelessness, which our opponents are here complaining about. We cannot solve our problems at the same level of thinking that created them. Port Angeles knows that a better approach is to invest in our community, invest in our working families, invest in our children's futures, and invest in planning for a prosperous city where everyone belongs, all races and genders, regardless of our abilities. We're moving forward with policies that everyone, so that everyone who is working in Port Angeles can afford to live in Port Angeles. Where we raise each other up rather than push each other down, we can stop the political polarization, especially at the local level, by understanding the root causes of the challenges we face and working together to solve those problems. Thank you.
Now for position two candidates, closing remarks, John Madden, please unmute. And you have one minute. Please unmute, John. You're good, you're good.
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting all of us to this forum. It's been, it's been really eye opening and, and, you know, we've been focusing on a lot of broad issues, but I'm, I'm really called to the small achievable issues like the speed limit signs that need to be placed on a couple of streets in town here. And, and we need a couple of beat cops on rotation, as well as a volunteer citizen patrol. The Kiwanis Club, the Rotary Club, Lions and Elks and Seroptimists could fund, could actually man those, those operations in quite well. I believe the community needs to have more input from the community rather than looking to the city council to solve all the problems. I'm really looking forward to working on the city council with, with John Proctor, Adam Garcia and Gina Stamper. I think they're, they're excellent leaders.
Hey, also, position two, Mike French.
You have a minute. Well, thanks for having us and hosting this forum. I think this has been actually a very substantive forum that hopefully has been very informative to the voters. As I said before, for the past four years, I've tried to bring a pragmatic, moderate, small business focused voice to our council discussions and all the committee work that I do. I very much appreciated the opportunity to serve my committee. I said at a different forum that one of the great sadnesses of my life is that no matter how this election ends up, I'm going to have to rotate off the Chamber of Commerce board because I've been on it for four years and they like to have fresh new faces. So I just have really enjoyed the opportunity to serve my community for these last four years. It's been very, very meaningful to me. And I always enjoy participating in a lively debate on the issues. So thank you for hosting this forum. Thanks for inviting me to participate. And I hope that I've earned your vote. Thanks.
We'll finish with position one candidates and first, Adam Garcia, please, you have one minute.
Yeah, so first of all, I guess I would like to thank, you know, the incumbents for their, the last work that they put in during their terms respectively. And I will freely admit that they have actually gotten some stuff done. I'm not here to try to say that they haven't. I, for one, am running because of their failures, though, not because of what they've done well. That said, in closing, I would just like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to speak tonight and the wonderful questions that were asked. I take very seriously this obligation to represent the city. And with your vote, I hope to help the city of Port Angeles prosper. My name is Adam Garcia. I am running for Port Angeles City Council, position one. And I would be absolutely honored to have your vote in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Latisha, Latricia Suggs, you have one minute.
Again, this was a great forum to be able to talk and answer questions from the community. I really appreciate that, especially during this difficult time where, you know, we're back to Zoom meetings and being able to communicate online. I'm grateful that we have the ability to be able to do this online. But, you know, I, I think that I'm kind of confused as to Adam's comment about our failures. I think that we've actually been quite successful in what we've done. You know, we've expanded rediscovery community paramedic program, provided over 780,000 in COVID relief. We saved the taxpayers over $3 million. And I look forward to being able to provide stable, experienced leadership for the next four years, sitting on city council. And I, I hope that tonight you've seen that I can be able to continue that and that you'll support me for position one city of Port Angeles. Thank you.
That completes our forum, but I have some parting words myself. One is, please tell your supporters that this forum is going to be posted. They can go to the League of Women website, which is L W V C L A dot org. And that it'll be posted in a couple of days. And it'll be posted on, the link will take you to YouTube and the entire forum will be there. So I agree with your comments, that was very informative. And I think voters, Port Angeles voters would learn a lot by listening to this forum. Again, candidates, thank you for your participation and your willingness to commit to serving your community as an elected official. Clearly, it's quite complicated. Thanks to everyone who tuned in. I don't know who or or how many of there you were. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Clallam County, I want to again thank the North Olympic Library System for co-sponsoring. And a special big thank you to Bonnie for her, her timing. I think that was a very, very intensive job, as was Sarah Morrison's job, who managed to get us all in the center of the screen when it was our turn to speak. That was no little feat to do that. So we really appreciate you and I'm sure the candidates do as well. I want to also thank everyone who sent in questions. They were very thoughtful and very informed and reflected some views that are out in the community. Let's see, oh, and don't forget to check out vote, B O T four one one dot org. All of you candidates, I assume that you're participating in that, that you've answered questions and that, and I'm sure they're in probably other areas as well, so voters can go and they can look up that information. So, oh, one last thing, there will be additional forums. One is on September 29th, one is on September 30th, that's also on the web website that is a force primarily SWIM, the SWIM City Council. But there's also one for hospital commissioners, which is covers the whole hospital district. So with that, I will end this and say good night to all.